Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Shipren and I am calling the meeting to order of the Townsend Planning Board this evening, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty-eight P. M. May I have a roll call vote, please? Carol Hawes is present. Ian.
Ian Ortiz, present.
And Laura Shipren, present.
Ian Ortiz, present.
Thank you. Laura Shipren, present, and absent with notice is Mike V. and Robert T. And Beth is here along with us. We all know that the meeting is being recorded. I would like to recite the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as always, thank all of our veterans out there, and in particular, Ian, our own planning board member, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Um, we, any volunteer forums come in under one point four, who knows? Going to one point five, review and approve the meeting minutes from February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Do I make a motion to approve?
Yes, do you want to take them separately or together?
Uh, can I take them separately only because I just
Yeah.
finishing this.
So will that, um, okay, so the draft that we did have prior to was February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ian. Any further discussion, additions, deletions? None, okay, hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Carol Hawes, yes.
Ian.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
And Laura Shipren, yes. So February thirteenth is approved. And then we have Monday, February twenty-seventh. Draft. At that, we can take a quick review. That was the continuing. Continue to refer. Housing Authority. And the Townsend Housing Authority asked us for something, and are you able to give us that section? Of the, that they want us, um, input on?
Yeah, that's, if that's in the document, and that is basically the cluster development section.
Okay.
So I can, it, it's been definite, and it's referenced on the bottom under items on file. Can you see that? So the proposed, the proposal is listed under items on file. I'm not, that's
Okay, number three, zoning, okay, um, if you can, I'm not online, I don't think, but if you can share that, um, screen share of that, I'm happy to take that up. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Well, I think it's March.
No, no, it's February.
Oh, good, thank you.
Today is
My apologies.
March twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven, sorry.
Okay. Right, I have a motion.
I second the motion.
Thank you, Ian. Any further discussion on the minutes, any changes or additions or deletions?
Not for me.
Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote to approve the minutes for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Carol Hawes, yes.
Ian.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
And Laura.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Yes, thank you. Then it's approved. In the back. Two point one. Planning Board Regulations Review. Um. I don't think we're going to do two point one tonight, or two point two. I, I prefer doing those with the full board, you know, I think we have, those are really items that should be discussed and all, uh, input
Yeah.
from the board. Um, two point four. Uh, twenty twenty-two, town, notification to clarify how to locate housing production management attachments in the campus. Yeah, um, I don't know if we can do that tonight, but I would put that, maybe not for the next meeting, but for the following meeting, have that on the agenda, and, um, so that we can, the board will look at both the master plan and that document, and, because currently all we have amended to it are the goals and strategies of the housing production plan, yeah, so are we thinking about what?
I would amend the whole document if we can.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can, but
Can we add the whole document? See, the whole thing about that is, because the master plan has economic growth in it, and so doesn't the housing production plan, even though it has, um, the main goal of it is for housing production, it, it does refer to economic growth and business growth and, and things like that. And if we don't get that going, or have some backup for that within our master plan, I think it's, it's not as, um, it's word on you think, or thinking of, it's not as viable.
Yeah, I'd love to see the whole document amended, if we can. So we probably know more about that, and you've done a lot of documents and plans, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the housing production plan has a lot of really
Good stuff to put into the master plan.
Would I append it or somehow combine it with the master plan?
Could you, if if you looked at whatever the economic development is in the master plan, and it's different in the housing plan, and the housing plan is better, then I would update the master plan
Okay.
to change the language to match
And I think that's
the housing plan. And because isn't the master plan the overall plan?
Yes, yes.
So that should take priority, so to me, if there's better words in the housing plan, just take it and, and amend the master plan and stick those words in place there, economic development, I mentioned.
Okay.
But that's
And then reapprove it.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, and that's what I would do.
Oh, okay, yeah. So do you want to do that?
That makes sense.
Sure, I can, uh
What, Ian?
If that makes sense, what?
Yeah, okay.
So we're not looking all over.
Exactly, exactly.
So you just want me to take the both plans and
And incorporate it, or say this is better than the other, and, and what you could, if you don't mind, what you could do is as you're doing it, refer to the section. You don't have to make the, the final decision, just say, gee, this looks better than
This, yeah.
Okay, and then will, the board will look at that. And we don't have to do it all at once, we can piecemeal it.
Yeah.
Okay, so when you have time, if, if we do one section, because that was my goal anyway, one section each month, okay, each meeting.
So I'll start with the economic development section, and look at where
We could do it.
We could do it.
Change, okay?
And then that way I could just print out those two sections.
Yeah, and we can
And then
And vote on that, and change that.
Whatever.
Fantastic. Because you can cut and paste, or it's a Word doc, right? The master plans, so then as we make the changes, you can make changes, we can vote on them that night, you can actually put on the footnote, or in the section that was changed, on such and such a date, voted on such and such a date, however you do it, when you, when they show amendments, you know, with the date.
Or usually, well
That's how I see documents, amended on such a, like our bio.
Yeah, I, I know, working for the Air Force, when we, there's like, there's a separate sheet that would be attached to the document, and actually, on the sheet, it would say, it would say, you know, updated on such a, amended, because
Yeah.
by law, all of our documents, uh, have expiration dates, and they have to be I, I worked for the Air Force, Ian.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's
And, and then when you have IG inspections, you know, they look, well, they look, actually, I got to be an IG. Uh, I got to be, go on IG inspections, what a fun. I wasn't at IG, I've been T-ing, you know, one of the best TDYs ever. And they did everything for you, they picked you up at the airport, they
Oh.
Ooh. But yes.
Our tax dollars at work.
Yes, yes.
They tricked you like a candy, or queen.
Yes, the only downside is, when you're the IG, I've been T-ing, or the inspector, you have to write up the report at the end of the day, and that really because you've got to stay until they're done, and it could be late at night, it could be ten o'clock at night before you write your reports for the day.
Okay, that would be great.
But yeah, I could do that.
So April tenth agenda, then, that's the second meeting, and April, you think that's enough time?
Well, for one, at, whatever you do, whatever she has ready, that's all we'll do.
Yeah, because I'll just, I'll, I'll look at, I'll just focus on the economic development piece for the two documents, and I, I should feel good after that, that meeting, there's no problem.
Okay, so I guess where I was coming from, rather than having one sheet at the end, if you look at our bylaws, our town bylaws,
Oh, you have like a footnote?
They're amended at the bottom of each page, or in, let's say, the National Association of Realtors, when they change their bylaws, their code of ethics, let's say,
Okay.
at the end of each section, it says date amended. So you're looking at a section, and now, as far as the, um, okay, so, but I think the, the index is good, but I think we have to have it in both places.
No, what, I, we did that on our contract. If we had to do a, if we had, if there was change to a contract, we'd actually put the change in the section and say
On the section that the date.
Yeah, was that, that contract change with me.
But I, I like your idea, too, to have, and just because the, um, like it was fifteen years since it was last done, but it's supposed to be done every five. Okay, the master plan. If you have a date at the back, if you have a sheet on the back of the document that says on such and such a date, like we approved it last year. So say we have two amended dates in twenty twenty-three, that's going to appear, so it's going to stow that the document was looked at and changed. So when five years comes down again, that document's going to the state.
Right, it doesn't go to the state, but
Or wherever.
What I suggest makes a lot of sense, um, and it's certainly something that we can do, and it sounds like how they do the town code as well, so the town clerk uses that process.
Yeah, and I understand that, okay? And then we're always like keeping up with it, we're not behind five, ten, and fifteen years of doing it, so, cool, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, I really didn't think we would do that, but I, the more I saw it, I thought we should talk about it. Okay, um. And then under correspondence, please.
Um, well, if there is, I don't know if you had a chance to look, but, um,
I did have, so
I believe, uh, the county of Townsend has been approved to join the
March, yes.
Yeah, we saw all those maps for the parking lots and riding share, whatever.
Yeah, so it's very, very exciting, um, and so then working the transportation path force, among that force, so, um,
I was trying to figure out how the parking lot was going to be extended back here, or back there, or wherever. On the map, it shows that we were going to add another row parking back in the parking lot.
Yeah.
And then make another parking lot gone off of Jet Street or something, down
Yeah, well, right behind the parking lot, and, oh, that's Main Street.
Yeah, we're So the big news, though, is the bus routes that we've been working on, that, um, that
From our buses?
Yeah, so we're, we're working out the bus route, and, um, we have a draft, and and it will be discussed tomorrow night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, so this is all very fresh and
Yeah, it is.
very exciting. Um,
And it was announced at last week's MRPC, that they just did it that day, or the day before.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
So we're going to have buses every day of the week, it looks like, I just, I just got the bus routes, and it looks like they will be both weekday and weekend routes. Um, and that's a morning route, so, um, folks in Townsend can get on the bus and connect to the commuter train.
They did give us the beginning date, did you get a date?
Of when it will begin?
Not yet.
This is all very fresh, the routes are not even, you know
Okay, okay.
That's tomorrow night, if you want to go to the meeting, but yeah.
So they're going to go to the Pittsburgh station?
The Pittsburgh Intermodal, yeah, and from there, you can, yeah, wherever.
Yeah, right.
Into Boston, um, Pittsburgh State, uh, I think they can get buses to Pittsburgh State from there, so, um, there's a lot of the planning was getting students to school, getting workers into Boston, and getting into Boston for fun. Uh, go to the museums, you know, and, uh, it's an opportunity, and, and it's a very small
If the subway works.
Yeah.
Not just to work, but have fun.
Yeah.
What, I said, why don't you get into the city, if the city subway works?
Oh, the city subway work.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They may have a lot of trouble
Yeah.
with the subways in Boston.
They're very excited about that, but yeah, that's
Yeah.
It is, that's for me, that fits, yeah, and tomorrow night, if you want to attend, it's, it's going to be on the Board of Selectmen's agenda.
And all that specific, but stopped.
Yeah, so the stops will be right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Add in the extra parking.
That's right, yeah, so it'll be like a parking ride here, and then hop the bus and get on the train and go, you know, possibilities are endless. So, and the cost is very low, I think it's fair to stop something. And you can, um, I believe you'll be able to bring your bus, uh, bikes on the bus. So that's great, on both ways, because we could have people come to Townsend and use the bus trail and the walking trail, so it's really going to help with flow and both directions for economic development.
And people take their bikes on the train into Boston?
Yeah, yeah, we picked the train routes that would take bikes, so there's certain it will, certain it won't, so so a lot of fighting possibilities, for both bringing people to Townsend and bringing
Getting on it, so.
Yeah.
Awesome, thanks. Three point two. Um. Anything else?
Yeah, well, um, the, since we met last, the five term hike states, uh, town level management permit and special permit has issued, and I don't think that had happened the last time we met, or it was happening that
It was happening then, but there was a twenty-day appeal, appeal?
Yeah, and that's, will be appealed with no, no problems at all, so it's ready for recording, and that's ready to go. Um, but I did put the storm water management permit in the folder, so everybody is aware of it, um, because once it's recorded, and it's now going to be monitored as all the other permits are, with the
So remind me.
Okay. That's, I mean, that's all, the permitting is done, so
Okay, the permitting is done, who records the permit?
The owners.
Yeah.
So it goes, uh, it's, it's recorded at Middle Sixth South.
Okay, did you? Was that sent to the owner with instructions to record?
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
I can resend it, yeah, by phone, or call.
I'm, because I'm thinking it probably, they're volunteers.
Okay.
I, I'm thinking it's probably been overlooked.
Okay.
And just put, please make sure this gets reported.
Okay, yeah, that's, that happens very common, yeah, I mean, we have other private permits and stuff that fit not reported.
Right, but they have somebody that can do it.
Yeah, I'll follow up on that.
So, but, because what'll happen is to see, okay, so if you email it, it's not an original that gets reported, can it be e-recorded? Because then we could just have, um, then they can just email your email to their council.
It has to be, um, a true attest copy, so
Okay, it's a test copy?
The town clerk. The town clerk holds the document for the twenty-day appeal.
Oh, yes.
If no appeals are filed, then the, uh, applicant comes to the town clerk and gets a, what we call true attest copy, which is her seal and signature, and then she's certifying that no appeals are filed. And they take that document to the registry, has to be with the wet signature of
Okay.
So that's how that works on that.
Okay, so make sure that Anestis, the applicant, gets the email with specific instructions that he is now to go to the town clerk, pick it up, and get it to the, get it recorded.
Okay, and, um, the other thing to note is, every applicant receives the certified letter indicating that they, uh, the notice of decision, so a certified letter is sent to every applicant, and that's how they are notified, but I'm happy to re-notify. I'm happy to do that, so, if needed, and that's, so beside that, with, uh, stormwater, we did receive one monthly inspection report on, from Three Wheeler Road, and that came in today, everything looks great. One inspection checklist, the monthly inspection.
Which one did you say that was?
Uh, Three Wheeler Road, so that is the earth excavation, uh, permit in the storm water management permit, uh, our
Did I say something from Campbell?
Yes, um, at your last meeting, uh, Campbell Farm had sent in a request for a certificate of completion, and the board, uh, did not approve it. So I sent them an email updating them that that was the case, um, I think it's in the file here.
I thought I put something in the file that you sent up.
Yeah, it'd be in your file, let's see, I put it under what's this, response, yeah, I put it under a response for, uh, request, um. Basically, just informing them that indeed the board decided to wait to issue the certificate of completion, um, and then I also informed them that their, their permit expires December ninth of this year, and that they, um, they owe the board a few monthly inspection checklists, because they got a little bit hung on that.
Campbell?
We need that.
Okay.
Especially in the spring, when things are rainy and
Wet.
Yeah, so, so they have been informed, and all other, and I was working off a letter that was originally issued to the planning board, and a lot of the questions were not for the planning board, so I referred them to the building community there to get their questions answered.
Okay.
So. That says
Three point three, notices from the Office of the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, number two, uh, the reorganization of the Board of Selectmen, did you see that?
Yeah.
So
Which, yeah, but who, who do we have?
Chad is now the, um, chair.
Chair.
Yeah, Veronica is the vice chair, and Teresa is the duck.
And who is our liaison?
It's, I believe that hasn't changed, I haven't had notification of any change, but that is still the liaison.
All right, Chad. Well, Chad let me know that he couldn't come tonight, I said not to worry, because we're going to have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, he said that he would be available on our next meeting, which is the third, April third.
The third, yeah.
Okay, so
Okay, great.
So I guess we, I guess he's intending to still be our
Oh, good. Yeah, I didn't hear any changes about that.
Annual meeting May second, warrant to close April fourth.
Yeah.
Do we have anything going on anywhere, just me?
Uh, the only thing is the, uh, edits to the special, uh, flight plan review special permit that were made for special home meeting, do you remember that? And they figured it'd have
Oh, and Robert was going to handle that?
Yes, and so that's now carried to in the home meeting.
Okay.
That's been carried through.
Right.
So that's it.
Um, notices from Townsend and other towns?
Quite lengthy list, and I'm sorry I didn't get to make a, um, a digest for you, uh, because I've read quite a few. Um, but I did, also, if you look in that folder, the board had requested a couple of things.
I can't get in there, I'm going to have you to screen share the notices. Okay, okay. Ian, can you hear Beth when she speaks? Ian, yes? Okay. You speak exactly, so I can know.
So I'm just going to note it, but I'm not going to screen share it. The board had asked for, um, from the last meeting, it was a while ago, the board had asked for the draft articles from the town of Groton, they're proposing a, um, modification to their accessory apartments.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so I did get that for you, and I put it in the folder.
Okay.
And that's for your, you know, just for you to look at and, uh, review. Along that same line, you expressed interest in the shared driveway, um, application, uh, for towns, uh, for Groton as well. And so that's also in here, um, I have the bylaw, the shared driveways bylaw, and that's actually a special permit that's issued by the planning board in Groton. So that might be something that we want to, you know
Look at?
You might want to look at that here for Townsend, yeah, because they have, and it's, um, it's in the folder as well.
Okay.
Put them in the agenda.
When we look at that, you might want to reference, because we have something in shared driveways, well, I don't know if you call it shared, if it was hammerhead, um, in our bylaws.
But it's not a special permit for the planning board, right? I don't believe it is.
I don't know.
I've never seen one, but maybe it is, and I know there's been a shared driveway for, um,
Well, we have some in town.
Yeah, my daughter's on a shared driveway. My daughter's house, it's two houses, I mean, her driveway
Is she on North Side?
She's on North End, North End Road.
Yeah.
On the, um The Hampshire side, yeah, the Hampshire side.
Okay.
Hold on, to the border, but her house, the two houses, they're like way, way, like
They're separated.
But there, yeah, the driveway goes down, and then her driveway goes this way and that driveway.
So they come in the first part.
Oh, yeah, and that's the longest, it's very, it's very, very long, so this side of the driveway of the thing is, all of that house is property, and this side is all of my daughter's property. But then, when I was telling you the other thing, so, what if I didn't make this, make them do a turnaround down here, there's plenty of lane to do a turnaround. But they can, I don't know how a fire truck would ever turn around, they'd have to back out, I mean, it's a long it's a long ways. Um, I mean, because her house, I mean, the, the shared driveway is, I don't know. It's long, I mean, it's way, way, the houses sit way down.
Speaking of turnaround.
The notices, yeah. Yeah, so the zoning board of the field did issue a decision at their meeting on March twenty-second. Um, they threw their decision to, um, basically uphold the building commissioner's letter.
Vision.
Yeah, and I'm writing that decision now, I've had, had to go to the town clerk for it.
Okay, and then, um Did, did they get input from the fire department?
They did, originally.
I thought they did.
Yes, originally, yeah, so they, they worked with, they, they'd examine a number of, um, exhibits, heard a lot of
Okay.
optionality, and then the site visit, and yeah.
Okay.
So, this is the kind of ashby piece of the notices, like I said, they're quite lengthy, I think there are like fifteen of them, so I'll, do you like to scroll through, should I?
Um, yeah, why don't we just do a scroll through, this is Wednesday, April twelfth, and what is it for?
What you, certainly, it says zoning amendment.
Oh, for the bylaw?
Yeah, they're going to delete open space residential development and replace it with a national resource protection zone. That's interesting. That's a big change.
Why? Why? What's the difference?
The purpose of this zone is to reduce the impact of projects developed under subdivision control in order to preserve natural, natural repurpose. The proposed bylaw limits the number of dwelling units, requires the preservation of open space, provides flexible area and transit maintenance, among other requirements. It allows common driveways in the zone subdivision or non-subdivision properties by special permit and provides standards for subdivision permits. Subjected by houses to be accessed by the zone common driveway. The design of the project was spent from the analysis of the natural portfolio, so it's contained within the purpose.
I don't know how different that is from what we have in, under open space here.
Hmm. Have to look, um.
Probably more flexible. Like, compare that to, to our open space bylaw.
Yeah. It may be more flexible. But it does limit the number of dwelling units.
Cause ours was pretty restrictive.
Hmm, would you like me to get a copy of that?
Yeah, just put it in the portal and I think we'll, we'll just review it offline.
Okay.
You know? Right, Carol?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm gonna request that copy.
Cause, uh, cause we wouldn't act on it now, but I think it's something that we could look at and we could compare it to. Our open space bylaw to this, because.
Yeah, so.
Oh, he said he wasn't notified. Oh, the chairman, the applicant.
Okay.
To pick it up.
Okay. I'm gonna see, so that's going on. I will get a copy of that draft bylaw. Um, and then next, this is from the town of Groton.
Would you copy me on that notice when you send it out?
Planning board, um, public hearing notice from Groton. A citizen's decision basically rezoning. A residence or property, looks like it's gonna rezone. They're requesting it to be rezoned to business. So they can open a indoor pickleball facility.
Oh, wow.
So that's their request. I guess that has to go before town meeting, that would be approved by, you know, in the rezoning article. And Groton made a decision on a de-tapped accessory apartment. Yeah, didn't say, do you see where it says granted or not? It's been needs granted, yeah, granted, a special permit for a de-tapped accessory apartment. Um, here they.
Granted for detached accessory.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah, that's a lot in, in capital as well. I'm hearing that. Um, and this one, they granted a special permit of Hammerhead lots and shared driveway. So if you'd like, I can get a copy of that decision. So it can help with, um.
Yeah.
Information. And Lunenburg, having a recent decision. For site planned, I guess. Uh, Lunenburg. Public hearing on March twenty-seventh, which was tonight. Site plan approval. Auto sales.
Yeah.
Public hearing tonight again in Lunenburg, a planning board. For. Brazilian restaurant.
Wow.
Right. And in Lunenburg, planning board again, hearing is on April tenth. Alteration to the code. Uh, for self-storage.
Mm-hmm.
That's great, yeah, cause we, we also have some, some work to do on our self-storage. Uh, regulations and zoning for that. I can request that one too.
Okay.
For a fall. Um. And Pepperell, uh, zoning board of the field hearing. Um, looks like it's on March twenty-ninth. An accessory apartment above a two-car garage. Good. And then the zoning board of the fields again for Pepperell, on March twenty-nine. And is for a another accessory apartment, I guess, or it's the same level, so I can sell.
It was, um.
And several zoning board, um, the hearings on the day, April third. Modification to the location of a common drive. With, with, uh, Pepperell noticed a decision for an administrative appeal, which was denied, um, and that. Doesn't say much more than that. The town of Groton zoning board of the field, um, for variance. So it was. And rented, you see that? I'm just getting rid of this as quickly as I can. Okay, sorry, that's, yeah.
That which a decision was reached.
Oh, good.
But it.
You got it.
Um. He's speaking of areas with protective zoning related to, so it's, but. Um. Huh, I don't see, it says a decision was reached. But it doesn't say if it was granted or not.
Interesting, let's see, this is, I'll just say then, here we go.
To approve.
Okay, great, great. You now have a clear thought to do now.
Yeah.
But thank you. And it's all fine, so. Really, um, the town of Harley, that's the planning board, over the public hearing, um, it's already done, um. That is section seven of the protective zoning bylaws and two special permits. Yeah.
Hmm.
Application. It doesn't say what the zoning bylaw is. Oh, no, I'm sorry, this, the hearing is. Under those, uh, pursuant to that, so. Town of Foley, public, planning board, public hearing on, I'm gonna say April twelve. A site plan review. And a special permit. Uh, related to uses allowed by the, commercial uses or mixed uses in more than one principal building in the same lot. Fifty-two air road. And that's the last one.
All right. Okay, well, thank you for doing well. And now we are done with much. Carol, any update on safety lists to pull?
You know, I don't really think anything's been done with.
Three point six, system planner training collaborative annual conference follow-up. Oh, yeah, you've gone to that.
Yes, uh, both Robert, Barry and I attended, um, and we divided and conquered and went to different sections and were. Really, really good. Um, we both had a great experience and he had asked if he could. Update the board on that, so what I'm doing now is I'm collecting all the materials that we can, all the face and faces, all the powerpoints that. They're willing to share, cause we couldn't do all the segments. Um, but uh, once we get those all together, I'm compiling them in a folder. And then perhaps at the April tenth meeting.
Yeah.
We could have an update.
Okay.
And share that. And.
Yeah.
April third, no, it's not gonna be a good one for that, um.
Review response letter to request for stormwater management permit.
That's the Campbell Farm, yeah.
Oh.
So that's a duplicate, sorry.
Okay.
Already done, and three point nine is a duplicate as well.
Okay, so those two you can actually remove.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
From. Or you can note them in the minutes as.
Hmm.
Error, not an error, but, I don't know. Removed as prior agenda or whatever, however you wanna word it.
Okay, yeah, I appreciate it. I recommended that at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. Uh, conferences and courses under four point one, citizen planner. Another CPCC, yeah, you wanna just remove that? And then stormwater regulations, erosion, sediment control, do mass transportation center.
Yes, I went to that one and it was excellent, um. I thought it would be more geared towards the regulations and Townsend had a great stormwater bylaw and regulations. Um, but it was really more geared towards site inspections. It was excellent. We had, um. P P W folks, water department, conservation and planning. Uh, so there was a, a mix of people there. The instructor was excellent. He could answer pretty much all the questions that we had and. He did. We went out on, um, and we went to one of the cat basins and we pulled a sample and we checked turbidity, so we, we got a lot of. Cool tools that we might be able to use here in Townsend, but um, overall, highly recommend it for. Uh, anybody in the highway department, um, conservation, water department, cause in land use, when these permits are issued, we have to monitor them.
Okay.
Yeah, so it was excellent. And I did put the presentation in your folder.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
No.
No. Ian, any questions?
Negative.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we are through the agenda. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven eighteen P M.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven eighteen P M.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Okay. Um, uh, here, a roll call, both please.
Carol Hox, the chair.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
And Laura Schifrin, yes. Okay, thank you very much. We are adjourned.